Hey, this is public hearing. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th. Twenty twenty, wait a minute, I gotta call this meeting to order. Sorry about that. We are now called to order. I'd like to welcome all of our guests here to the June 20th, 2023 regular meeting of the Lee County Board of Supervisors. Now we can go on. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 5:30 PM in the General District Court Room with Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia to solicit input on a rezoning request. Kenton Arthur Eads has applied to rezon property that is currently zoned to R1, single-family, residential and VC, village commercial. To R2, general residential. The property consists of approximately 1.2 acres of land and is located on the south side of Dr. Thomas Walker's Road, OWS 58, and on the west side of Wild Rose Heights Road in the Rose Hill community. Tax parcel 46A-2-51-53, 51A-55A, 51B-57B, and 51C-58C. Is there anybody here on behalf of that request? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll say it. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same eye. Eye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm staying.
I'm staying to represent Mr. Eads recently.
Okay. Motion carries. Represent everybody. Next is opposed amendment to and readoption of the transient occupancy tax ordinance. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 20th, 2023 at 5:30 PM in the General District Court Room with Lee County Courthouse located in Johnsville, Virginia. Purpose of the public hearing is to take a public comment on the current ordinance tax only short-term, less than 30-day rentals in boarding house, hotel, motel, or travel campground at a rate of 2% of the rental fee. Proposed amendment will tax all short-term, less than 30-days rental accommodations at a rate of 5% rental fee provided however the tax were not imposed on rental accommodations located within any town that has imposed a tax on the transient occupancy. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak on that?
I just had, hi, I'm Sharon Fisher, was taken ago. I just had a question. How would this affect things like tourism? Is this like if people have B and Bs or that sort of thing? Does that hurt small business to do something like this?
I wouldn't think so, Mr. Pope.
It's current, we currently have transient occupancy tax of 2%, but it only applies to hotels, motels, boarding houses, and overnight or travel campgrounds. This, all the Airbnb's, everyone like that is escaping the tax while motels and these others are having to pay it. So this makes it uniform for all short-term rental agencies to pay, and it is a 5% fee. It would increase to 5%. It's pretty much standard with what's all around us in the region.
So it brings everyone up to the same level?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
I did. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. On that tax there, I was doing a little research on that, and the administrator's correct that that is a 5%. But I noticed that they had that broken down where like 3% went into county and 2% went into tourism fund to promote the tourism and the trailers camping areas. It was used like that, so they had it segregated. So that's just a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more discussion about that.
Yeah, sorry.
Page four of the ordinance, if I'm reading it correctly, about a third way down the page under interest in penalties upon failure or refusal to admit tax. It looks like this is the form and it says insert percent. I think it needs to be a 10% penalty. That's, I'm thinking, right, Dean, you can correct me. It's 10% if you're late on the other taxes such as your real estate taxes. But I think we've got to insert some percentage in there. I would recommend 10. You see where I'm coming now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Usually they have a parentheses around that, and that's how I pick those up in a model ordinance. I didn't catch that one.
Do we need to load on that, Mr. Pope?
Prior to adoption, yes.
I'd like a motion to adopt it.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And then to insert 10% into it.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll say it. All in favor, signify the same eye. Eye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next thing is proposed budget for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Lee County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing on the proposed county budget at 5:30 PM on June 20th, 2023 in the General District Court Room of Lee County Courthouse in Johnsville, Virginia. Any citizens of county welcome to attend and take their views on this proposed budget. This summary is prepared and published for information and fiscal planning purposes only. Please be aware that including in the budget of any item does not constitute an obligation or commitment on the part of the Board of Supervisors of Lee County to appropriate any funds for the item or purpose. The budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023 will be adopted by Lee County Board of Supervisors no later than June 30th, 2023. Anyone like to speak on behalf of that?
Hello, my name's Kim. Excuse me, my name's Kim Howland. I'm the financial advisor of Planning District Department Behavioral Health Services of the Community Services Board. And I just want to, I want to thank y'all for your continued support in our services and just take a minute to tell you what we've been doing the past year. I've passed out our annual report, and as you'll see, we're going to only look today at the last page, page eight, but I would encourage you to read the whole thing. But we've provided many services with our, in partnership with Frontier Health. And as you can see on page eight, the services that we've provided are listed there, and we've served 4,481 individuals in the catchment area of Lee, Scott, Wise Counties and the city of Norton. And as you can see over there, about a third of those that we serve are under the age of 18. And then in addition to those 4,481 individuals that we've had direct services, which we contact or we reached another 6,763 people through our prevention event. And those are targeted towards all kids. Those are in schools, they're in workplaces, they're in universities, so we're trying to hit everybody with that. And also in partnership with Frontier Health, we've been able to provide 219 jobs within our communities. But we're still looking, as with the shortage, work staff shortage that we continue to have, we've taken steps to not only recruit new employees but to retain the great ones that we already have. And these steps include implementing higher base wages and other employees incentives such as leadership training and more flexibility in work schedules. And we've had some indication that this is working because we've had a higher retention of it, our retention of employees has increased since 2021. So we're very happy about that. And we just want to go ahead and thank you again for your continued support, and because of that support, we can continue to grow with new facilities and new services. And I want to tell you just about one new service that you'll start hearing about on or about July 1st, and it's the national crisis number of 988. So anybody who's in a mental health or substance abuse crisis can call 988 and it'll be dispatched to one of two call centers in Virginia. And we're happy to say that Frontier Health is one of the two approved call centers in Virginia. And then they will dispatch the appropriate people to come out and help with that crisis. So it's much like a medical emergency, you can call 911 for mental health or substance abuse crisis, you would call 911. And you should start hearing, there should be a national campaign, like I said, that starts without, around July 1st. Y'all have any questions for me?
You say you are having a shortage of employees?
Yes.
What kind of employees are you looking for?
We're looking for mostly direct care employees. We're looking for employees that will work directly with the individuals, but we're also looking for case managers, we're looking for employees to help staff the call center. And if you go to our website, which is right here on the very back of here, and you look under employment, it'll give you a whole list of what we're looking for. But those are a few that come to mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name is Erin Neely. I have a campground towards New Virginia Rock Bottom Horse Camp. I have questions on this trans, transient occupancy tax ordinance. One, where did this ordinance even come from? Like, I mean, like, how did it even get brought up to increase more taxes on? People actually come in here and actually see this place?
We already had a tax in place, right, Mr. Pope?
Yes.
And you did.
We just increased it 3%.
Huh? I'm sorry?
We just increased it 3%.
Right. And that makes it 5%. Because there was already a 2% transient occupancy.
And like Mr. Pope said before, we're just trying to make it level playing but we're for everybody.
So where would this money be going? Would it be going towards like tourism? Would it be going towards, because I haven't seen anything about a board towards a board or there's absolutely no, nothing anywhere about, come see Lee County.
I think there is on their website, didn't you, Mr. Pope?
We do have a tourism committee, and the economic development director is in charge of tourism.
So now, where would this money be going?
Well, this money goes into the general fund. And then other, the tourism budgets, various funding for tourism entities comes out of the general fund. So this is just a small amount that goes into that.
So it's going towards the general?
Yes, goes into the general fund.
Okay. And this is towards campgrounds also, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Melanie Jorgensen, if you could put the opportunity to address the board. I would like to address in the budget, the last line of the general county fund source of record. You look at your general budget, the last line is the regional improvement commission in the amount of $750,000. This is our first payment from the casino money, that's what I call it, the casino money. And something, this is quite a gift because of our distance from Bristol. This commission was established pursuant to Virginia Code Section 58.1 or 107.1. And the reason I mention the law, that statute, the money received and designated is only to be spent on three designated areas: public safety, transportation, or educations. Therefore, in my opinion, this money should not be used by our county to balance your budget, our budget, and put with general expenses. I'm asking this, this money not be used to jail, to pay, to jail our criminals in the regional jail, or to simply be added to the school system's budget. Instead, I would propose that you ask the citizens of Lee County, what do they think we need for this substantial amount of money? And this is only the first year we're getting it. Perhaps create a committee of like one or two people from each of your districts and ask the people, what are their wishes to use this money? They've even established a three to five-year spending plan. This is special money that, in my opinion, should not just be dumped in the general budget and designated to regional jail or designated to the school system. Please, use this money for something that's all of us who benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no intention of using that money for anything other than what it's designated for. Anyone else?
My name is Sol Kovac, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you all about this issue. I want to talk with you about the open door abatement authority. As you're aware, this is a great concern to the whole community and the impact of Lee County. We've developed, several people have come together and developed some questions in regard to the specific grant that's going to come to Lee, Scott, and Wise County in the amount of $346,222, oh, 22, for an extensive outpatient treatment facility for youth. We need more detail. I reviewed what was available for the budget, and there is very little available, there's nothing about this, but what is available for the public to review is very, very scant, and we think this is a very important concern. I listed some questions here. Number one is what is the vision of this program? Number two, what agency will be behind this? Is this frontier health? We don't know. Is this a new facility to be constructing, or is it going to use a facility in existence, like an existing building? And if so, where is that going to be located? How accessible is that going to be? When will it be up and going? As you all know, there's been a major concern with opioids in this area. We've had this problem forever, but ever since I was coming. And that's been almost 26 years now. It's, so that's a long time to wait for services. How will Lee County use access these services? And this is, that's something that we're very concerned about because of limited transportation and limited transportation or limited medical facilities available for youth. The hospital has very limited ability to deal with youth who have substance abuse problems. We know that the program that will be implemented has proven effectiveness. In other words, is it an evidence-based program? And that's very, very important. There are a lot, I totally respect the sheriff. He's tried very, very hard with his therapy, but the research shows that that is not an effective program with the students and schools. How much money has Lee County received from the opioid settlements? Just to begin, we've not gotten any information, and there was nothing in any of the budget documentations. Did any of you all have a look at it? Have you all looked at it for perspective? Has all the money's gone into three county youth program facilities? If not, where has the money been invested? Where is the money? I appreciate you all listening to me, and I hope that we can get some answers to this and let you know that there's a wide community base of people who are very concerned about opioid use issue in this county. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jerry Cox. And I want to thank the board for getting the budget together, the hard work that was done on this. And a couple of things that I have an opinion on is we collected a lot of tax. I talked to Chris Jones today, and he told me that it was over a million dollars, the revenue collected on that personal property tax on automobiles. And I just think that any reduction of any amount would be a benefit to everybody since they paid the excessive amount last year. That's up to you members to decide that. And I know that the wheel tax, looks like we get like the revenue of $700,000, and it looks like the state reimbursement is like $800,000. So it looks like that nullifies the funding, you know, for the state. And I know that's already said, but anyhow, any relief would help. Lee County is a poor county. We have almost 30% poverty rate, and people have to travel. And I'm not here to disagree with your budget numbers, I'm just here to ask for some relief on that and your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Emma Kelly, and I live in Roseville. I'm also field coordinator for Appalachian Voices, a regional nonprofit that does a lot of economic development work in southwest Virginia. We work in all seven Gulffield counties and have extensive experience working with localities on different economic development projects. This includes a campground, hiking trails, and downtown master planning event, the Free River's Destination Hall, and a program that places students in a technical cellar apprenticeship, the same apprentices who have been helping install cellar panels on Lee County schools. My questions about the county spending for this coming year concern the community development and planning amounts. I was wondering what development projects that money might be spent on, as well as how the county is actively going after supplemental federal and state funding. I understand that the county employs a part-time grant writer, and I was also wondering what grant, what grants the county has successfully applied for in the past and what grants are on your radar for future projects.
This is public expression, ma'am.
Yes. I thought questions were okay as well?
What?
I thought questions were all right as well?
Public expression is public expression.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, fellas. My name is Scott Short. I live up in Seminary. I'm here tonight, I've got really two things that I really want to speak to this board about. First thing is this budget, this is pitiful. But this is the legacy that you guys are going to leave. It's not going to be the coming board's legacy. Hopefully, whether it's me or somebody else that's elected to this board, that they can straighten this mess out. People have been taxed to death in this county, and taxes are frankly still going to keep going up, but I guess there's nothing can, that can be done until the board changes. But that's enough of that. You guys see it in black and white, you know what's going on here. Second issue that I've got is it's really not an issue, it's just something I just want to bring up, is concerning Mr. Jesse. You put an advertisement in the paper back about January that you didn't have no plans for no, tearing up the mountains up in Dryden, behind Dryden Heights and stuff. But you know, after I've been out on the campaign trail for a few months now, I've talked to a lot of people, and these people tell me things. But you've been suing a man from up there for a right of way across his property. And you know, this is not something that we want people to think about Lee County. When they want to retire and come here, if people choose Lee County, that's a blessing. We would welcome them with open arms. But you know, the impression that they're getting, and they're sending back to their people from, from different states that want to retire and come here and see this beautiful county, don't come here because they'll run over again. They'll try, they'll try to take everything you've got, and you know, in a legal way. And that's just not right. And you know, all I can say is, if I'm elected, this is not going to happen in the board district court. We help people. We help, we help the, the people that's less fortunate. I've been fortunate my whole life. We was raised poor, but after that, I've worked for everything I've got. And I just believe in standing up for people and doing what's right. So you can take that to the board, and you all can discuss whatever you want to do, or just let it fall upon deaf ears, but that's my opinion. I appreciate you.
That is totally inappropriate, what you just said, and single out a single board member. If you've got something to say to him, you need to talk to him in private and not them in public, and then try to lay him into the wolves. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to public expression. Anyone, anyone wish to address the board's public expression? If not, we'll move on to approval of amendments.
Chairman, can I speak to one thing?
Yes.
This, go back and ask some good questions regarding the opioid money, specifically the $346,000 request. The May 1st, 2023 meeting probably, that's online on audio, and it probably answers most of those questions, but I asked a lot of the questions that, that you asked, and I think the most of that's probably covered there.
Well, we, there was no public notice of this. So we don't know everything. I don't even know what you're talking about. And I, you know, that's an issue, is how transparent you are about this, because we just happened to read in the newspaper.
I had no notice that they were coming that day. None of us had any notice about it.
Well, no, nothing was said after the fact either, until it got in the newspaper. And it was, there was a meeting last week where it got in the newspaper.
Perhaps, I don't know, but as far as transparency, one of the things that this board has done to improve transparency is put all of these meetings on audio online so you can listen to all the meetings, and so it's there.
There's never been anything in the newspaper that said it was online.
Do I have the floor, Mr. Chairman?
I apologize. I apologize.
May 1st.
That's one of my problems.
May 1st meeting, even listen to it.
Yeah, that's one of my problems, is to interfere, but there was no notice that it's on the line. I've never seen anything in any newspaper that there's an audio online. Can you tell me what it is? Who is it?
May 1st, listen to the audio, and you'll hear it.
It's on the county website.
It's on the county website?
Yes.
Have you ever advertised, say?
Along with the minutes, well, they've been on there for several years.
Have you advertised, say, it's on the county website?
Well, they've been there for several years. I don't re-advertise things.
Have you advertised it's on the web?
I don't think, cause it was advertised additionally or not, but.
Thank you. A motion to approve amendments of the May 16th, 2023 recess meeting, the May 16th, May 23rd recess meeting, the May 31st recess meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same eye.
Uh-huh.
Eye. Motion carries. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to abstain because I actually missed two of the meetings.
That's fine. Next is payroll. County administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued. Next is approval of dispersments.
Sir, excuse me, did you skip four and five on the agenda? You were talking about the budget.
Four and five.
Didn't have public expression.
He did call for public expression, I heard. But he did not mention departmental reports, which is just inserts in...
Were you not hearing call for public expression?
In the board packet, no.
She was commenting on the budget when that was being discussed.
Yes. But he called for public expression. I said, he said next is public expression.
Well, what happened to section four?
He did skip that.
I did not hear any call for public expression. Did anybody else? We'd like to have public expression, please. Please, Mr. Chairman.
I called for it, nobody answered.
What nobody heard? I didn't hear you say it.
I'm sorry, but that's over. And the departmental reports are reports that are in our agenda here that we receive. I'm going to entertain a motion for approval of dispersments.
Sure.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Next is finance.
Didn't call for the opposed.
Oh, you opposed?
Aye.
Sorry. Next is finance, supplemental appropriations. I'll entertain a motion to approve the supplemental appropriations. Some other, a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If none, all in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Old business, county code recodecations, Mr. Pope.
As much as I was poking on that, I think we're ready to submit that to the coders with the recommended changes that they have submitted to us. Along with that, I'll be updating them on any amendments or additional ordinances that have been added since the time that it was initially sent through them. All that should be complete by mid-July, back in their hands.
Thank you. Fire alarms at the courthouse.
That one, we actually have two systems operating. One in, on the first and second floor. There's only three alarms in the lower level that are tied to the panel down there in dispatch that give a location. And again, all of these are exit points from the building. The ones upstairs, that panel has not functioned properly in several years. We attempted to get, when the downstairs was renovated, we thought that the electrical company was going to upgrade that, but since the two systems are not tied together and the ones up here are just alarmed, giving you no zones or anything else. I've had Johnson Controls come on site, that's who'd installed the last units. And actually, these old units are a company that they acquired several years ago, they don't even, I don't think they run under Johnson Controls now, they've got another name. But anyway, I've asked them to give us a price on tying the two systems together and upgrading them to the same system. So I don't have any numbers on that, I'll be bringing that back at a future time.
Okay, thank you. Next is ARPA funding.
I think that was the request from Mr. Leonard on the Sactron signs, I do not have an answer on that yet.
Wasn't it also for the COVID money too, or was it just the ARPA money?
Yeah, it should have been both, COVID money, they should have got COVID money too.
The town was still...
Well, yeah, but it's got to be some part.
Well, yeah, I don't know whether it could be released, but they were still in existence at that time because the General Assembly had knocked. But I'll add that to my request.
Next is secondary road six-year plan.
That has not yet been approved and it was supposed to be approved by the end of June.
Have they gotten us what we asked for?
Well, I haven't gotten anything back from BDOT on that. I have gone online and pulled up some information on the road count, on the two proposed additions for this year, as well as some of the existing projects on there. And I think there was a comment made, that was the night, we had that storm and I was in and out of the meeting, but looking back at it, I think there was a comment made or discussion with Mr. Shunter about the possibility of developing new priority or project priorities. And the way I understood that was that not to reprioritize the existing projects on the plan, but to develop a list of proposed projects in the future that could be basically looked at prior to the time for the six-year plan and prioritized by the board for how they would like to bring those on, based on road counts and things of that nature. Is that correct? I mean...
That may be what somebody said, but what I said was that we need the same thing that we always get, which is how many roads are on the road, or how many houses are on the road, how long is the road, how much will it cost to do the project? And what's the traffic count?
Well, okay, to get the cost estimate on the project, we have to have those roads in advance of having the public here. BDOT needs to have those well in advance so they can do cost proposals. Now, the road, the traffic counts on each road are online. I've got a spreadsheet that I downloaded today. It is a big spreadsheet, all the roads in Lee County that have traffic counts, but it does not identify which roads are unpaid. If I have particular road numbers, I can look at those and they are in segments. In other words, you may have, for example, 612, but you may have five or six or seven or eight segments of that road with a traffic count on each different segment. And I don't think anything on 612 is unpaid, so that's not a road that I could look at for unpaid roads. But I would have to know which roads you're interested in in order to be able to turn you know, what, how much of that segment's paid or not paid, things of that nature.
Do we have the answers to those questions for the roads that were on the list last year?
I have, and house counts, that's not something that BDOT can provide. We would have to go through and physically have to count those off of our mapping or something of that nature. And then the other thing that comes into play on that is that you get some roads that interconnect with a lot of other backroads and you may have houses on other roads, not on the road you're talking about in particular, but that are on other roads that actually factor into being served by that road in some way. If you only count the houses along that road, we can do that, or along that road segment, but there's no way to calculate who drives which direction and from where to get to their house.
I mean, how did you do it in the past?
We didn't normally do that on a continuous basis. We may have done it last year, just to pull up the number of houses on some roads, but that's not something we have typically done.
And our question to them, they were supposed to give us, they were supposed to send you a list of all ground roads per district.
I did not get anything from them.
And as far as the cost, that's not a big issue. I may not think, I think we're all smart enough to where we can figure out the current cost is to build a road at that time. We'll know by the footage of that road because they're supposed to give us the footage of it too. So I think we've got to figure that out overall, but the rest of it, we need to know.
Okay.
Want to table that?
I'll try to get all of that prior to your final lead and put this over here.
Motion to table. Second. I have a motion and a second in discussion. If none, all in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is new business. First thing is board appointments, building code officials.
I'll add that one in my district there, I'd like to vote to table that again.
Second. I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Board of zoning appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reappoint Clyde Scott Jr. to that position.
Second. Have a motion to reappoint Clyde Scott Jr. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, say five to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is community service board, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Margaret Gibson.
I have a motion to reappoint Margaret Gibson, do I hear a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
That's one appointment. The next one is...
I'd make a motion to reappoint Judy Roberts.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Next is long-term pine office home use. Did Brooks graduate this year? What about Abigail? I wasn't sure, and I had not discussed this with anyone, anybody, had anybody that would like to appoint?
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I want to go back to that last one. Mr. Leonard, are you sure Judy's eligible to be appointed Judy Roberts? I was told she, if she's eligible to be reappointed, I was told she wasn't eligible to be reappointed, that she's already served. I assume she was, she's on the list.
She is not, she's at the end of her nine-year term.
I had somebody message me, I think maybe Susan White or it reached out to me and maybe you, I thought she sent you...
Susan had sent a letter, yeah, I think it's in your packet, I'm not sure.
I didn't see a letter, it sure reached out to me. I didn't see anything.
It's in the FYI, I believe.
Yeah, there's a letter in there from Margaret, I know.
Well, there's one in there from Susan as well.
Yeah, I saw Susan.
So is Judy's term up or not?
Yes, that's what she said.
It is, it is up, yes.
So it is?
It will be at the end of June, yes.
She's limited by her bail laws.
Okay, well then, who was that other one? Susan White? I might have a motion to appoint her to that.
Second. I have a motion and a second in discussion. If none, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next thing is audit contract extension.
Chairman, her current contract for audit services with Rob's Department of Cox was for a three-year term and has a provision to extend that for an additional two years for the FY23 and FY24 audits. In order to do that, we would need to exercise the option to do so. They provided a contract modification agreement to include those two additional years for your review and approval.
I thought the increase was pretty extreme.
It's, well, you've got a three-year period lasting and the government county standards board has added three or four new requirements that require extensive gathering of data to keep up with all of that, so, and just keep adding more and more to it.
We try to negotiate with them, do we?
Uh, this is what they've submitted to us.
Is that a no?
No, that's correct.
Do you think it's worth 25% more?
With the work they're doing and the limited other firms that work in our region that can do this? Yes.
It's probably worth talking to them about.
I'm discussing the potential to reduce it.
Tell them how bad our budget looks.
They see it, they audit it here.
They haven't seen the company yet.
Actually, with their cost, they're part of it. Okay.
I make a motion to table that.
I have a motion to table.
Second.
Contract extension. And a second, in discussion. All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need to back up one for Southwest Regional Recreation Authority. Board of Parliament.
Motion to reappoint Richard Johnson.
I have a motion to reappoint Richard Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, in discussion. If not, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is ARC water project grant.
Chairman, in your packet, you have a copy of the contract for an Appalachian Regional Commission grant, amount of $542,300. This is for the Okamita Miller Smith Chapel Interconnect Water Project. This interconnect project would allow water to be pumped from Blue Springs KDS Water Treatment Plant in Western Lee to the Miller Smith Chapel Water Storage Tank. It would also allow water from the Town of Pennington to be redirected to the Okamita Water System during normal or emergency periods. This project would further strengthen the water reliability throughout the county by providing this additional interconnect. No county money involved in this, we're just a pass-through agent as an ARC grant.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is school resource officer grant.
There's a copy of the grant offer from Department of Criminal Justice Services for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30th of 2024. Total match is $52,524. Of that, $9,003 is local match.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve the school resource officer grant. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, in discussion. If none, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is law enforcement equipment grant.
This is also from Department of Criminal Justice Services, a law enforcement equipment grant, amount of $480,000. It'll provide funding for the purchase of six SUV police vehicles, 30 BOLO wraps, 30 AED units, eight electronic tablets, four tasers, eight portable...
eight electronic tablets, four tasers, eight portable printers, and six travel hubs. There's no local match required in this. It's fully a state grant.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second in discussion. All in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is Maintenance Hanger Bid.
As a design build project, that is a propose, a proposal. I would recommend you take that up in closed session.
Next is Virginia Career Works One-Stop Operator Proposal.
This is a proposal as well. Uh, it is the only proposal received for these services as the fiscal agent, uh, for, uh, workforce development in, in the region. Uh, we're required every four years to go out for these services just for operation of the one-stop operator provisions of workforce development. Uh, we did put out an RFP for this, uh, no one else other than the Workforce Development Board submitted a proposal. Uh, if you need to discuss it further, we can. It was reviewed by three independent reviewers for completeness. Uh, they all, uh, deemed it to be complete as presented. I would recommend that you take, uh, the Workforce Development Board has been operating the one-stop centers for probably seven or eight years now at least. And there's no other interest shown through the request for proposal process. So if you want to go ahead and take action on it, uh, I don't see a problem with it. The total cost for it is a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That is all state money. There's no local, none of the county's money involved in this. It's state grant funds. But, uh, the state does provide, it, they have the requirement that you have to advertise at least every four years for the services, but the local workforce development boards are allowed to make a proposal for that and operate them in-house. So that's what this is doing.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next is the PD One Behavioral Health Performance Contract.
Each year, the state negotiates performance contract, uh, for all behavioral health districts. Uh, one requirement on that of the performance contract is that it must be approved by all participating localities. We are in the Planning District One Behavioral Health, uh, region, uh, Lee, Wise, Scott, Norton. So as a member of that, we are required to provide our approval of the, uh, contract, even though you have no role in negotiating it. I think Ms. O'Dell did serve on the statewide committee.
She did.
To develop these this year, so, uh, and as you can see, it's a very lengthy contract or performance contract that they have in there, but it's, it's an annual requirement that we have.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. The performance contract for behavioral health.
Sub move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is, uh, reports and recommendations of the county attorney.
I don't have anything to report, but I do request executive session for potential litigation. Discuss that.
Reports and recommendations of the county administrator.
I have, uh, requests for closed session on, uh, personnel, uh, contracts. I think that's it.
Reports and recommendations of the board. Mr. Smith, another. Mr. Cobb.
Mr. Leonard's asked several times about checking on AT&T for county offices, uh, that have cell phones. Where are we on that?
I will, uh, we've got a call scheduled with him next week anyway. I'll take that up and see if I can get a contact and we'll get started.
I noticed in the budget for the county garage, the bill amount was... Does he have a cellphone?
Yes.
Is that all he has?
That's all he has.
It looked like it was Verizon pricing on instead of AT&T amount right on that.
Yes.
Can we look at his too?
Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll, but I think we were looking at transportation and, uh, we're probably UCS because he should have AT&T service at home. Uh, so...
Where are we on the litter judgments being recorded, the line records?
Uh, I didn't find out on that one. I'll, uh, I'll follow up. I, I, I talked to him on travel issues the last couple of weeks, but that's one I didn't think to ask him about.
Can, can we get that stuff put in all business, the phone situation, the litter judgments?
Yes.
Stuff keeps coming up?
Yes.
Clint, uh, quarterly, I'd like for him to, we talked about him going and looking at facilities at the county homes. Can we just have him hand that his quarterly report to me?
Yeah, he and I, he and I talked today. I gave him the list of properties to be looked at.
Gifted property. Where are we on the property people want to give to us?
Uh, county attorney, I can't see her, but, um, okay, there she is. Is there anything further that you need, um?
Not, not with regard to the ones that you gave. We discussed what the issues were with some of those.
Okay.
The others, there weren't any issues.
Okay.
I guess at this point, it's just whether you all vote to accept them.
All right. I talked with one of those property owners, uh, last week or week before last. She just wanted to know if we were looking at them or still interested, told it was in process. And I've got to make contact back with the other one that I mentioned to you. I'll try to take care of that one tomorrow and, and get the list of who the... It's aired property, so I need to get a full list of the heirs on that.
I thought we already decided which ones we wanted to accept, which ones we didn't. I'm quite sure we did.
Well, yeah.
We narrowed them down, so because of some conflict.
I can't remember if you voted specifically on them. I know I discussed with you the ones that I thought there were issues with, that you certainly didn't want to accept and reasons why, but I don't think you voted then and then accepted the others.
So do you still need some guidance from us about which ones we want, which ones we don't?
I think so. I've got the list down there. Let me get them before, when we go into closed session and I will confirm.
Community centers funding. I don't think we have that in the budget, right?
It's not broken out. It's always been under board miscellaneous, but if you want it broken out separately, we can fit that as a separate line out.
I think instead of piecemeal and one coming to us and saying, "I need money," and then the next one, I think we all just say, "This is what we're going to give if we're going to give anything and be done with it." They can know what to expect. Y'all have a opinion on how much we should give them and what should be included?
What about...
And what should be included? So I said, "What you say, don't say. Who do you want included?" I guess White, White Rock, Rock, uh, State Mill and one, you know, the anger. I'll make the motion and we add that to the agenda. Is that okay? You're okay with that number? I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed?
On the, uh, airport, we voted to let the county employees cut the brush. We gave a deadline. Did anybody convey the deadline to them?
Okay, uh, I thought that was going to be...
We voted to let them use the brush cutter to cut what they could. When they got done, we would look at what was left and see what part of it we wanted to spread. We set the deadline. I don't recall what it was, but I wondered if it was conveyed to them.
I don't recall a deadline being set. I thought that was discussed as a project for this fall.
I thought the deadline was August thirty-first, but I don't know what it was, but I know that there was a date to be set.
And I don't recall.
If not, I think it should be August thirty-first.
Summertime is extremely busy for them, so we can set it, but other things...
Has anyone told them that they're...
Other things may have to go.
Well, I guess my concern is that we set up these projects and then other projects get in front of it and I'm not sure who's prioritizing the list, but for example, the St. Charles Ball Court, we've got somebody who wants to resurface it, wants to pay for it, and then we build a new one in District One, which is needed, but with our money, that gets in front of this other project's amount. So I don't understand who's prioritizing the list and if, if anybody is saying the board wants this done in this order by this day.
As far as the St. Charles Ball Court, he has looked at that and was preparing an estimate on cost for it. I don't have that in hand yet.
But you don't really, I mean, that's something we've talked about a year ago.
Well, one of the things that they've been working on off and on is after the demolition of the old school board building or school board offices, getting that lot cleaned up and straightened up. And that's just about complete. They took down the trees behind the old ag building today. So that project's just about wrapped up. All of, most of the landscaping is complete over there, so...
Do you think that giving them an extra month, end of September?
I, I think you probably need to do that. They're dealing, they're probably going to be dealing later this week with project, uh, the transfer station. We're going to have to electrify that fence because we've got a pair of problems there now.
Well, I'll make a motion that we put that on the list to be done by the end of September.
Okay.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I noticed on the, on the Works Program Weekly Report that they're doing some cleaning for a local nonprofit. I note the opinion that they should not be cleaning... They should be doing work for the county and only the county, or the towns, that's fine. But I don't think we want to go down the road of every nonprofit that they can come in and clean their office space. Not saying that nonprofit doesn't do good things, but there's a lot of nonprofits that do good things and there's a lot of things that need to be done in the courthouse that still haven't been done, such as the rest of the painting that we authorize them to do. I just don't think it's appropriate for them to be providing cleaning services for nonprofits. What are they, what are they doing in this, like, Appalachian, uh, ACA-C, Appalachian Community Action Coalition, for example? What, what are they doing? Cleaning? I mean, Valid Health is a nonprofit. If we want them to go clean the hospital, I mean, there's all kinds of nonprofits out there. I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't think we voted to allow them to start doing that. You all have any thoughts on it?
I agree with you. I mean...
Do we need to vote on that or is consensus sufficient?
Consensus is good with me.
Drug court, uh, I'd like to add that to the, to the, uh, to the budget and have that come out of the opioid money to fund the drug court. So I understand that they requested some money. It's not in the proposed budget.
Right.
I don't, was it ten thousand?
Ten thousand.
But I, I've read the regulations on what, what the opioid money can be spent on drug courts or approved. So I'd ask that we, that we add that and it come out of that money. I'll make that before the motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
And they, did you say the NDCC promise was in the budget or was not?
It is.
It was the... That's all I have, Mr.... Thank you.
Mr. Gacy.
Nothing.
Mr. Leonard?
I got a couple items. Uh, I don't, like I say, I missed a couple meetings there. I don't know if it's brought up or not about, uh, closing all our offices to where our people wouldn't be coming in for no reason on July the third. Was that brought up at any of the meetings that I made? If not, I'd make a motion to close those offices on July the third, twenty twenty-three.
I think we did discuss that, didn't we?
I don't, I don't do that.
I think it was discussed, but I didn't think, I don't...
Well, we discussed it while I was here, one meeting, but I know I missed a couple when I like say I don't...
It wasn't discussed anymore. I just didn't want to have it.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And my next question was, and you all, I, I, I need, I guess, an answer from you all did. Was it discussed anymore about to approve the partial funding for the Pen, to get, uh, Park and Rec Director? Is that...
Yeah, I got a note to add that to the budget. My question was last year, uh, well, in June, July, when we approved that last year, when we approved it, it was paid from the ARPA funds. And I didn't know whether you wanted that to be paid out of the ARPA funds again or if you want it just as a general fund out.
But it is included to be paid.
Well, if it's coming out of the ARPA funds, yes, it's included because I have a budget amount for it off the ARPA funds. But if it's coming out of the general fund, no, it's not, it's not included.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to, to approve that, uh, out of the department fund.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'll make a motion and a table that.
Yeah, well...
I'm here to be voted.
Huh?
You talk about taking the Town of Pennington's request. You just, you just voted. I don't know if it's included. It has the ARPA funds.
No, we got a motion and a second.
Oh, you got a motion and a second. You haven't voted yet. Okay.
So is that something you want to take up in closed session?
It's not really appropriate to close session unless you're talking about taking a general decision.
I'm okay with taking it, I mean, we got a long table that I, I just like to get, uh, but I will get whatever, you know, needs to be discussed.
With your motion?
Y'all withdraw the... We just put an amount on it. I don't like it.
I have a motion to table, second, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one more thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, I'll leave it up to you. That young lady, I think there was some confusion, you know, with some talking around the room and stuff like that, that maybe she could have possibly missed her chance to, to speak. And I, I didn't hear what she started saying, so I would like, I would like to hear what she had to say, you know, I mean, it... But that's up to you, you know?
We don't know.
The, you know, lady back there, you know, she started speaking and, and then there was some confusion that I could call for...
Other expression.
Expression. I think there was some talking around that, that she possibly could have missed that. I'll leave it up to you. I mean, whether you want to allow it or not, but other than that, that's all I have.
It is very hard to hear you all. I have a hard time. That's why I sit up front and I still have trouble hearing you all.
Huh?
I said, "It's very hard to hear you all." I knew what you were doing.
I'm not going to do that, indeed, because we're open, we're open to that.
Okay, that's fine.
But, uh, I talked, Mr. Poe, about this, uh, lady that get fuel at the airport. You have any more updates on that?
They, uh, I gotta remember exactly what the engineer sent me back. He, he contacted the contractor. He said he was supposed to, that plane they have, uh, that will be shipping the additional pump that he's waiting on within the next two weeks. This was last week when he sent me this. Uh, the engineer went back to him and said, "Okay, so, uh, can we look at mid-July to start the project?" And I've never saw a response from that, but just sort of left it hanging. But apparently the last, the last piece of equipment that's needed to do the project is supposedly in line to be shipped.
Okay. What's his contract run out?
Uh, I'm not sure his contract is, as, as far as a notice to proceed on installation.
What are we waiting on?
Typically, you do that once you know they've got everything they need to do the project. The issue is notice proceed before they have all the materials needed to, to actually complete it. Really going to, well, the first thing they're going to do is turn around and request for a, for a stop work order so that they have ample time to get the products needed. But I'll get back with the engineer.
That's all I have. Motion.
I'll make a motion to go to the closed session for, say, two point two, X thirty-seven eleven, subdue and personal, three acquisition or disposition of willing to seven threat for pending litigation, eight consultation with counsel, twenty-nine contracts.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify the same high.
Aye.
Any opposed?